It is 6 o'clock. I'd like to call the Village Board meeting in order. If you would stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Okay, welcome everyone and welcome everyone watching at home tonight. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Carter?
Present.
Trustee Mariscal?
Present.
Trustee Kazan?
Present.
Trustee Gett?
Present.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Present.
Trustee DeBoer?
Present.
Okay, we have everyone here, so nice to see everyone. We would be at Item 4, Approval of the Board of Trustees Minutes for Tuesday, May 21st, 2019. I'd ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I do. Any questions or corrections to the minutes?
Small typo.
Go ahead, Trustee Counsel.
The ordinance for the zoning, let me find it on there. The zoning ordinance amendment that was adopted on May 21 actually did not receive the required number of votes. It required four votes, four affirmative votes. There was one trustee missing and the vote count was three to two. In that circumstance, you as the mayor have the opportunity to vote because it's effectively the same as a tie when somebody is missing. I misheard it. I heard trustee Weisenberg vote yes, so I thought it was four to one as opposed to three to two. So, we're gonna need to put that ordinance back on the agenda for the next full board meeting, but the correction to the minutes is that it did not carry, three to two is not sufficient to adopt an ordinance. It requires four affirmative votes.
So, we want to adopt the minutes as corrected? Is that all right? Madam Clerk, do you want to redo the minutes and bring them back to us for approval at the next meeting?
Yes, I'll redo the minutes and bring them back.
Does that make sense, Counsel?
It does.
Let's defer approving the minutes, so if the maker of the motion would-
Okay, good.
-pull that back and the second-
And then just for the record, it was ordinance 2019, 1592.
Correct.
So, I just have the maker of that motion retract that and make a motion to defer the approval of the minutes?
I make a motion to defer it.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
There is. Any discussion on that? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, we would be at Correspondence. Madam Clerk, any correspondence?
There is correspondence. We received two letters. The first one was from Barbara Larson, who's the president of the Peoria Heights Community Band. The letter reads as follows. Dear Mayor Phelan, the Peoria Heights Community Band would like to thank you and the Village Board of Trustees for the $1,000 grant check. It will certainly be put to good use and we'll use the money carefully. This extra money will help us with purchasing some new music to add to our library, some drum equipment, and of course to help pay our conductors throughout the year. We do appreciate the donation very, very much. We hope that you and the Village Board of Trustees will be able to attend one of our outdoor concerts this summer. We have three outstanding guest conductors and a wide variety of music planned for the entire summer. We look forward to our large audiences and of course that does bring more business to the Heights, which helps all around. Thank you again, sincerely Barbara Larson. The second letter that we have was from OSF Healthcare and it reads as follows. Mayor Phelan, National Cancer Survivors Day was a fabulous event on Sunday, June 2nd at Peoria Heights Tower Park. Our patients, media, and colleagues thoroughly enjoyed the beautiful setting. We received glowing feedback from our guests and we couldn't be happier. So happy that we would like the opportunity to talk with you regarding making National Cancer Survivors Day the first Sunday in June an annual event at Tower Park. As medical director of OSF Radiation Oncology and as a resident of Peoria Heights for 30 years, I would like OSF Healthcare Oncology to join forces with the village and the businesses of Peoria Heights to create a venue that would encourage more people to support this event while highlighting the uniqueness of the upscale restaurants and shops Peoria Heights offers. Working together, we can create a gathering to not only honor those in our community who are living with and beyond cancer, but we can feature all the amenities that Peoria Heights offers, creating the perfect venue for a celebration of life. Thank you for your consideration. I hope to meet you soon. James L. McGee, M.D., S.M.
Okay, and for the record, I am going to meet with Dr. McGee to see how we can move forward in the future for future events. All right, we would be at Announcements. We do have one proclamation, so Madam Clerk, if you'd help me, and I know I see Barb, is Teresa here, Jane, anyone from the Arts Committee, if you'd all come forward? Welcome. Oh, nice, nice to see all of you, Julie. So, as many of you may know, we were, a lot of this began, we were gifted $70,000 to acquire six Bruce White sculptures. Mr. White is a world-renowned sculpture artist that came out of Illinois and we acquired these sculptures. One Mobius sits right outside of Village Hall. That led to a lot of things happening. We created an Arts Committee to help us to continue to improve the quality of life here in Peoria Heights and to leverage this gift, so this group most recently put on an art fair for us. We didn't have cooperation from the weather that day, like every other day. It seems like it was raining, but you all did a fantastic job and we just want to show our appreciation for the fine work. So, this Arts Committee has really taken this effort and they're out there promoting arts so that we can again continue to have a good quality of life here and to encourage the arts within Peoria Heights and these events are typically free to all of our citizens, so, thank you Stephanie. So, whereas Barb Malaccio and Teresa McDade exemplify positive values in all of their village involvements and whereas Barb and Teresa are examples of leaders by being actively involved with the Peoria Heights Chamber of Commerce, supporting local business and exemplifying a passion for local art, and whereas Barb and Teresa founded the Peoria Heights Arts Committee, further enhancing the thriving art community in Peoria Heights. And whereas Barb and Teresa are honored today for their time and commitment to a successful Peoria Heights Fine Art Fair, therefore be it resolved, the Peoria Heights Board of Trustees hereby congratulates Barb and Teresa and expresses sincere gratitude for their outstanding service to their community, Michael Phelan, Mayor, and Stephanie Turner, Clerk. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And if you want to introduce everyone and tell us a little bit about what you're working on?
Yes, so I have of course Teresa, McDade with us here, this is Melissa Mettrich, Jane Johnson, and Julie Biafelt. Jane, would you like to speak? We are in the process of forming a 501(c)(3) for the Peoria Heights, which will be wonderful and it'll be the Peoria Heights Arts Collaborative, so there'll be some wonderful things that we have that will be coming up. So, we'll have an art fair next year and just a lot of things in momentum to keep things going, so it's exciting. You're gonna be seeing a lot of us, so yeah, it's exciting. Anything else you'd like to add?
The purpose of the 501(c)(3) is for our visual, obviously in our purpose I haven't memorized. The visual arts-
Jane, so we do have a lot of viewers that watch at home, so-
The visual arts, the culinary arts, the performing arts, and literary arts are all in our purpose and we filed those papers and got them back on last Friday, June 14th. So, we're on our way.
Yes, so we're getting close, so yeah. So, thank you so much for the village and for your support, yeah, so it's gonna be wonderful. A lot of exciting things coming, so thank you.
Thank you all.
You're welcome.
Okay, we would be at Trustees Reports. So, we'd be at Item 7. The first is Economic and Community Development. Trustee Kazan?
Yes, thank you. I would like to announce and extend an invitation to the 2020 St. Jude Dream Home Campaign Event, happening this Thursday, June 20th at 10:00 a.m. The address is 1324 Samuel Avenue. This event is one of the largest St. Jude Events in central Illinois, raising more than $850,000 in 2019. If you attend the event, the presenters will include Mayor Jim Artist, St. Jude Midwest Leadership Board, Scott Lewis, Dream Home Builder, Katie Arnhold Kim, CEO of the Kim Group, and other special guests. St. Jude is leading the way the world understands, treats, and defeats childhood cancer and other life-threatening diseases. I hope to see everybody there.
What's the date on that?
It's the 20th, June 20th at 10:00 a.m.
Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Okay. We would be at Police. Trustee DeBoer?
I just wanted to make an announcement that we have had an increase of vehicle burglaries, so we would like to encourage all of our residents to make sure that we are taking your belongings in the house, locking your cars, locking your garages, things like that. We have some other things to update you on as far as crime data online, and so Chief Sutton is gonna fill us in on all that.
Thank you, Trustee DeBoer, and just one other comment about that. I know I reported a few weeks ago, we made an arrest on one suspect that was responsible for numerous burglaries. Again, I don't want to give anybody any false or sense of security. There's always someone else to take their place, so even though we did announce the arrest, there's another group doing this. We're working closely with Peoria on this. We're not the only department or community being hit by this. It's really a tri-county issue, so like trustee DeBoer said, please just make sure all your belongings are out of your car and your vehicles are locked, so, and if you have any issues, whether it be a prowling issue or anything else, please contact us. You're not wasting our time, it's our job, so. As far as the Crime View, the crime stats online, I think most of the board members that were here for the last couple of terms, remember we used to have a Crime View link on our website and you could go in there and click on that and you could basically get notifications if it's whether it be in a, you know, whatever radius you select to be notified with any type of crime. When Peoria went away with that, we lost it too. Since then, we're on the same reporting system as Peoria. It's called ADSI and we're in the process of getting that re-implemented, so just kind of watch our website if you would and we'll make updates here once that gets going. Again, I know Peoria's working on that and also working on the Bartonville and Chillicothe, so that'll be an asset to the community. If you have questions on what's going on in your neighborhood, you can always call me, but that's a little bit, little easier to do, so. The other thing I had, wanted to bring up tonight was, over the last 24 hours, there's been a lot of dialogue about my contacting the organizer of a fireworks event down in the Paris area and I just wanted, I want to make a couple of comments about that because I don't have social media. I found out through our departments and things were being said. A lot of it was not true. A lot of people, instead of calling me, they're posting on Facebook or MyFace or whatever it is. I don't have any of that. But I do, I do recommend if you have any issues, you can call me direct, but since we are here, I do want to address a couple of things, that the mayor and the board had nothing to do with this. And when I talked to the organizer, I explained that to him and we had a great conversation and I said, "You can blame the police department," and this is why I've made that decision to reach out and be proactive about this issue. The last couple of years, we've had a lot of issues, a lot of arrests. We had two paddy wagons full last year that resulted in a stabbing and also two officers injured. And the problem had, and I've been through this for 25 years I've been here, I've been through this. It's a great event, it's a huge event. It's turned out, I mean, a pretty big production that would rival maybe even some of the fireworks events in the area. And when you have that, you start to increase your foot traffic and it's gotten so big and we've had some mixtures of people. I think 90% of the people we arrested were not Heights residents. So, as the police chief, that is just not something we're going to allow. Now, every 4th of July, our guys do a good job of balancing spirit and letter of the law when it comes to fireworks. We have other things to do to chase down bottle rockets and everything else, we really do, but we receive a lot of complaints on this and I think we do a good job of handling it where, you know, we allow it to happen, but when we start having stabbings, a lot of arrests, calling for Peoria's paddy wagons, that's an issue for me as a police chief. So, as far as anything like that in the future, I would be for having an organized event. If we could find a location where it's police, it's controlled, that's something we could discuss, but as far as the days of blocking off blocks of the street are not going to be tolerated, we just can't do it. So, I wanted to clear a few things up, that this board and mayor had nothing to do with this. This is a public safety issue, so as far as having small gatherings on your property, you're probably fine to do that, but as far as closing down the road, that is just not something we're gonna tolerate and this is on going from the last two years, what we've experienced, so. I just wanted to make that comment. I know the board's received a lot of calls on it, the mayor, I have too, and I talked to a lot of people today and had good conversations. I'm not saying they all agreed with it, but they understood it a little bit better now coming from that aspect. This is not really a fireworks issue that I'm talking about. It's a public safety issue, so.
Thanks for tackling that. The first I became aware of it was last night, so I heard about it last night and heard about it a little bit today and for the record, in my two years here, I don't tell the police department how to operate. I mean, we certainly oversee them, but we have a police chief and we talk about crime and we talk about speeding and we talk about things, but I'm not about to tell our chief what and what not to do and I have not heard any trustee take that position either. I think it's best to have that as a police matter, but again, so for the record, the police department did meet with Mr. White ahead of time. Is that correct?
We did not meet with him. We contacted him. We talked to him on the phone. He understood. He basically made that statement that, yeah, it has gotten pretty big, you know, and we had a, we had a good conversation, so.
And he didn't oppose that?
He did not.
Okay, and so just again too, so we all understand, if people, we're not, we're not out trying to ticket or to, we want people to celebrate the 4th of July, it's okay if they have a controlled party. Is that, is that correct then too?
Like I said, we, every 4th of July, Mayor, we, it's a juggling act between the spirit and letter of the law. We get complaints all the time. You have half the community absolutely hate this night, the other half loves it, and the complaints go on throughout the night and our guys do a good job of juggling and the last thing I want to come in the next morning and have a department full of fireworks. We don't want that and we don't have time to cite everybody and I know in the past, we've had some complainants really push the envelope that we've been forced to write a couple citations, but again, at the end of the day, this is more of the result of last year and the year before's crime and the amount of arrests we had, so.
Okay, any questions for Chief Sutton or trustee DeBoer?
Maybe we could get with him and set something up for next year and start trying to control this, because I know it's a big event and everybody looks forward to it, so I don't know who you would talk to.
Well, I would say the 25 years I've been here, I mean, it's been, it's been going on and now it's just gotten to this point, but I don't know if that's, if that's an example of what we're seeing in the East Bluff or what it is, but it definitely rolled into our, our area last 4th of July and I said we had to call for two paddy wagons from the city, so, and they were great, but it's not something that we're gonna get accustomed to.
And I think you told me today, you were actually called out and on scene at that event?
I was there personally, right.
Okay.
Can I ask you, Andrew, so where did that happen at?
The 100 block, I would, it would probably be west of the organizers, probably a block west of the organizers' property.
And everybody that goes there, we discriminate against violence. That's the reason why we started it, you know, there's all riots and all that around Glen Oak and downtown.
Well, and I understand how that started and I'm not blaming anybody from the Heights or that area at all. Unfortunately, when you have that kind of event that gets to that popularity and that size, there's things out of your control and we're not blaming the residents and like, that's why I made, that's why I made the comment of the 90% of the arrests were not Heights residents and the last thing we want is that knife, that stabbing turning into a shooting and getting to that point, so that's why again, I asked our guys to be proactive, you know, and for the safety of the community. I know you don't like that answer, but long, as far as public safety goes, this is better for the long haul. That's why I say if we're gonna move an area to a different area, controlled area, maybe that would be better, but you're exactly right. You go downtown, it's crazy as well and if you, I watched, and when I watched the body cameras of last 4th of July here, you wouldn't be able to tell the difference. There were that many people and some of them branched off out of your area, but they were there and I mean, I'm not gonna get into specifics of the different cases, but-
We accused of closing off the street and we never closed off the street. We police startled out there. The police officers in the vehicles have come up the street because the street's open and all they informed us, keep the street swept, no fireworks on the street. As soon as everything's over, we do 100% cleanup in Heights over there. Super Bakers has made money on it. The restaurants have made money on it. The restaurant has to get, they used to never have nobody there on 4th of July. Now they made money on it. We're trying to bring money into the Heights, not sending money off to elsewhere.
I understand that and as I said-
We're accusing the stuff that did not happen.
I didn't accuse you of anything, right, right, right.
We are being accused of stuff that did not-
That group and our guys have worked very well together and that's why I addressed that with the 90% of the arrests. Our guys do a good job. Unfortunately, there's things out of your control that have been brought in and that's what I'm referring to. As far as closing the streets, I know you don't put up barricades, but you know what, you put lawn chairs, it is closed off and we do a fine line of working with you. We have, at least for the 25 years I've been here, we've worked with you on it, but unfortunately, there's a different element here now and that's what I'm addressing, but you guys have been great. I have no problem. I personally, when I worked patrol, was down there with you guys and make sure you didn't get out of hand, but this is a different animal now, you know?
Yes, sir. Location in Heights that is possible for something like that.
How would you like to do this with you guys?
Let's bring the 4th of July to Heights.
Well, that's why I recommended if we're going to do something like that, we could have a controlled fireworks show in an area that would take what-
We have to bring something up. Are we close to the spot?
Well, I don't, I really want to follow up on this because I don't know that we have time this year, but I would love to get involved to see if we could find a site to do fireworks. Now, whether we have time to cover all how that would work, I don't know, but again, if, what I think, and I think I hear you saying, is if the neighbors there want to continue to have a party that doesn't spill out into the streets, you know, your own parties in your own yards, that's, we're not opposing that, but the chief is just concerned about the arrests, the stabbing, that sort of thing, but we'll work with if you want to, if identify a public site where everyone can show up. I think we'd be very interested in that and I'm-
We invited the whole Heights. We have very many kinds of people. There's been people from everywhere. I grew up with the mayor back in the 70s coming to my father's firsthand at fireworks in Heights.
Right.
We're inviting you guys to come and see us.
Well, and I want to, you've run a great party, but I think unfortunately now, and I don't, I think maybe because of social media, you get a lot of people that show up that you didn't invite, right.
That's why we're here, we're trying to get this work out to get something good for the Heights. Let's build the Heights.
Well, I want that as well, but I also want a safe Heights and that's part of my job description, so, you know, that's, that's what we're working towards, but as far as any options in the future, you know, I will, let me look, I mean, there's gonna take a location. I'm not sure if we're gonna have time this year, but I think it is something we need to visit in the future, so.
I mean, the chief and I are available to meet with the neighbors anytime, so we can do that this week. I've got a couple of funerals to go to this week, but we'll work that out and they could meet, I mean, you're willing to meet with folks and if I can't sit in one of the trustees, I'd like trustee DeBoer to be available since she oversees the police department and I know Chief Walters is here. I don't know if he has an opinion from the fire department, but we want, we want you all to have your fun. We just want it to be safe, so.
Okay, you know, like 3rd of July, Glen Oak, the school over here on Wisconsin, they should all, all kinds of fireworks. They have, the park of art people are full over there on the 3rd of July.
Right.
They have a big shindig. Is the people coming from there that you have been arresting?
Well, like I said, night-
I never heard of a stabbing last year.
Well, for two years in a row, two years in a row, we've had an increase of arrests. We did have a stabbing. We had two officers hurt last year in altercation, so it has gotten maybe not in front of your house, but they are related to that, yeah. And you, and you can't, and you can't control that. You can't control that. I mean, that's-
Well, if you work with Chief Sutton, we-
We won't, we won't, we won't, I mean, compared to 3rd of July in New York City.
Well, I'm sure you are. I'm sure you will because, because, yeah, right. If you only knew how many people called me on, you know, well, how can we get to the Peoria Heights event? And I said, "What Peoria Heights event?" They said, "It dwarfs Glen Oak and everything else," so, yeah. Yeah, right.
So, how should we go forward on this, Sergeant?
Yes, yes. Yeah, I'll be in, we'll talk after this meeting. How's that?
And folks, we have public comment. We're getting to public comment. You're all welcome to come up and address the board and we get to that. I want you to, so, thank you all. So, we're at Police. Anything else, trustee DeBoer?
That is all.
Okay. Building and Property Maintenance, trustee Mariscal?
Just a couple things. We're getting the new cameras installed this week in Tower Park on Thursday and I don't know if you've noticed, but it's pretty beautiful out there, so kudos to our seasonal employees for the flowers and the mulch and the beautiful landscaping that we've got going out here in Tower Park and around the building and downtown, so.
Thank you. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, Fire, trustee Weisenberg?
Thank you, Mayor. Peoria Heights Fire Department has responded to 28 emergency medical calls since June 1st. On June 8th, just a quick update, the Peoria Heights Fire Department responded with one engine, with four personnel onboard to a house fire in Kickapoo. The Brimfield Fire Department requested that support from our department. And additionally, Chief Walters has some additional information about a major fire event in Princeville. He would like to address the board regarding.
Okay, welcome, Chief. Glad to see you back and I don't want you texting me in the middle of the night. You should be at home taking care of yourselves, but glad you're up and around.
Last evening, 10:30, Peoria Heights Fire Department was summoned to assist Princeville. They have a restaurant fire that was fully involved and they specifically requested our ladder truck and a command personnel. Deputy Chief Bob Hill responded as the command personnel in our command vehicle, which is called C600, and then we had six personnel respond in our ladder truck. They got on the scene about, well, they got on the scene about 10:30. They did not clear and get back in service until 5:45 this morning. It was very busy for all the departments. There were 20, 20 departments involved in this and it was a tremendous loss for Princeville, but the reason I'm giving this to you is I'm very proud of what our personnel did. Keep in mind, they're volunteers. They got civilian jobs they have to do the next day. They were able to make phone calls and every one of them that responded was allowed by their employer to just go to sleep, which is a rarity. It's a great thing. I mean, they have respect for what they did, but our personnel, the total of seven went, were instrumental in putting this fire out because we took our ladder truck and that's what it took. We matched it with, Chillicothe sent theirs as well. Between those two ladder trucks, we were eventually able to put the fire out, so.
Thank you so much. Questions for Chief?
They were tired. Now, I just want to let you know, that was seven personnel out of our manpower that left the community, but I want to assure you at the same time, we had six of us, myself included, up here at the fire station just to cover, just in case, because usually that's how it happens. You know, stuff happens and when you've got something of this occurrence where we've got a lot of people that have left the city or left their community, we were able to backfill it with our own personnel and we stood by here. I think I cleared them about 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock this morning with the standing orders that listen to your pager. If it goes off, you gotta go, but in the meantime, we are up here until about 2:30 this morning, so we had a full crew here, we had a full crew there. Very proud of what they did, so.
Well, we're proud of all you, so thanks for being here.
No problem. Thank you.
Anything else, trustee Weisenberg?
No.
Any questions? Okay. Onto Public Works, trustee Carter?
Um, yeah, I'm gonna call Dave up. We, I, 1470 WMVD had announced that there was a boil order part of Peoria Heights, which really isn't for Peoria Heights. It was like on the borderline, so Dave, if you can take over.
Yeah, there was some confusion today regarding a boil order that Illinois American had put out. Like Cheryl said, the media got ahold of it and then it went on Facebook and it spread like wildfire. If you are a Peoria Heights water paying customer, you are not under a boil order. The Illinois American boil orders were on our boundary lines, but they were not, not affected us. We notify our residents of boil orders via door tags and we also notify them via the Facebook page of the village and the village website and if they're ever unsure, if they're affected, they can call the water office at 686-2375, so.
Just to echo what was said earlier, thanks to you guys and your crew. I don't think Tower Park has ever looked better. It might be due to parts of the rain, but the new groundskeeper and your crew are doing a great job.
Yeah, they spent, they spent most of last week up here helping her and I agree, it looks fabulous.
Back to you, Cheryl.
That's all. I think that's all we have. Do you have anything, Mike?
Okay, thank you. All right, we'd be at Administration, trustee Gett?
Thank you, Mayor Phelan. I have nothing to report at this time unless, Chief, you have, we got something later down the road here, but-
No, I'd just echo what trustee Mariscal said as far as the seasonal employees, our summer help started, the part-time ground supervisor, they've done a great job with the park and not only with the park, but as far as code enforcement goes and getting some of these problem properties mowed, they've been great, great asset to us there too, so as far as the personnel, they're up and running, so.
Okay, good. Okay, we're through all the reports, so now we'd be at comments from the audience. If anyone wants to address the board, typically we give you five minutes. If you come up and give your name and address and keep it under five minutes if possible. If you come up and give your name and address and keep it under five minutes if possible.
Yeah, my name's Larry Kelch, and I'd like to know if the board, if there's anything aware of the school, the grade school having a problem with this underground fight club where kids are getting beat up and stuff at school. Does anybody, I, I talked to some of the school board members, and they said they're aware of it. But what does "aware of it" mean? Does that mean I know what's going on, but I can't do nothing about it? Can somebody maybe check into this and see what's going on?
I'm not aware of that, Mr. Kelch, but is anyone else? I have not.
I've got a nephew that's been beat up, and I've got a couple of other kids that I've heard that have been smacked around and stuff by some kids that are from the Heights here, I want to say fourth, fifth grade or what. But they're trying to play this game of underground fight club, beating up whoever they want.
Well, I'm not aware of anything labeled underground fight club. As far as the schools go, we have a school resource officer that was in the school full time, and we meet with him daily, and that was never been brought to the police department. But I will reach out to the school and look into it a little bit further, but that's nothing I've ever heard, Larry, as far as any, any type of group or, or fight club like that.
Well, it is happening. I am informing you now, it is happening.
Well, I'll also, me, after, after the meeting, we'll talk about the other issues, but I'll get more information on that, and we can look into that. That's, that's an easy solution, so.
We'll get you an answer.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I do believe, too, I did see, I know if you're not following Facebook or whatever, but on social media, on the Neighborhood Watch, I did see some people on there commenting about those types of things happening up there at the school. I don't know, it might be just something for you to check out and go on that website and take a look, but there were citizens on there reporting stuff.
We, even though I'm not on the website, we do have detectives and officers that monitor social media, so that'll be easy to get to, but we'll look into that tomorrow. But I'll talk to you after the meeting on that issue as well.
Would you update the board, too, so we all know what you find out by email and Mr. Kelch as well?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes, sir, please come up.
My name's Anthony Crackle. I'd still like to address the fireworks issue. I would like to let you know that me and Chad are both grateful for you guys always working with us and everything like that, but we would definitely like to be able to know that, how we could do this definitely in the future, and write up some kind of contract, come with some kind of agreement that this can still proceed and move on. After all, we have been doing this for 25 years, and, and the community's never really had a problem with this except for over the years, and I understand that, yes, crime bubbles do get higher, and people do travel further away from homes, especially when you see fireworks, because they go way up in the air, and yes, you can see them from a long way away. I want everybody to know that, hey, we're not inciting anybody to come there and do something stupid or act out of place, because that is not what we're there for. We're actually there for the women, children, and mothers and fathers and grandparents and all that. We put the party on to have a good time and to celebrate our independence, not to have people come and act a fool. That's how I'd like to address this. But yes, if there is any way that we can actually come up with some kind of an agreement with you guys, we do not know how to do it this year due to the nature that it's way too short, but yes, we would definitely like to set something up with you guys in the future.
Well, like, I appreciate y'all being here tonight. We didn't plan this, but just simply because of the timing, we found out about it last night. We had a board meeting tonight, so I do want to meet with you. But again, you know, chief has to be comfortable, so if we can find a-
Yes, well, I would like the chief to be comfortable, definitely the fire marshal. Have he stood there? Yes, he is.
Hey, Anthony, what's your last name?
Crackle. Mr. Sutton knows exactly who I am.
If you work with chief, I will sit in and come down neighborhood, and we'll meet, we'll meet up here. Thank you.
All right. That's all. I thank you, and I thank you guys for your services.
No, thank you for being here. Who else? Anyone else? Okay, so we have, do we, we do have one more? I do have one more thing, and this didn't get on the agenda, but supervisor Gorman is here tonight, and I see Cory back there, too, so he's here to give us a little, a short presentation on the STEM Academy that Richwoods Township is putting on. So, welcome, guys. Don, you're walking a lot better.
Ah, doctor's a base. I've improved in four weeks with this hip surgery. I'd like to thank the board. I just got the invite for the township to make a presentation. Kind of give you a little background right now, this is the fourth year that Richwoods Township, Pearl, the U of I extension, and we have additional partners this year in the STEM Academy. I've been putting on a one-week STEM program for the students in the area, and last year was an amazing STEM Academy program, which was the conversation the students had with the International Space Station. And thanks to the Peoria Heights Unit School District 325 allowing the use of the facilities, so the ham operators of that could set up where the kids could talk to the International Space Station. The year before that was the Magic Mirror, and I would be remiss in not acknowledging who started the STEM Academy here in the Heights for Richwoods Township. Mayor Phelan instituted that program, and it's grown, and it's gotten larger, it's gotten more sophisticated. My son here, Cory, Cory Gorman, is a engineer at Caterpillar who's been involved in autonomous engineering technology and that for Caterpillar, and has been the one that had brought the project to our planning committee. Our planning committee is made up of Dave Johnson, Pearl Technology president, Richwoods Township, myself. This year, we have Tri-County Regional Planning Commission with Eric Miller and Hannah Martin. Hannah Martin is a planner for the Tri-County Planning Commission, who is involved in autonomous vehicles, and we have goodwill involved as a site for the classroom training. And with this, Cory has a little small presentation that he would like to make regarding the Deep Space Racer, and one thing that I think he'll highlight is Peoria Heights should feel pretty fortunate in the due diligence that Cory and Dave Johnson prevailed in to get Amazon to agree to release these vehicles prior, this is prior to public release, and the students are, he can speak, he's attended the class training the last two days on how well these students are taking part in this technology, and that's 5th through 8th graders. So, with that, I'll let Cory make his presentation here.
Thanks, Don.
Did you handle it?
And in case, in case you don't know, STEM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math, and the reason, Don helped me get this program started, we both worked hard on this, but these are where the jobs of the future, the head of household paying jobs are going to be, so we want to get our, our children, our kids excited about these fields and get them to consider them. So, Cory, welcome. Your dad and I talked a lot, so.
Thank you. There's a little bit of five minutes left here. So, this is a really exciting opportunity for the kids this year. I think the, we have, the project, the program's open to 25 students. It's, it really fills out, gets to capacity as soon as we open it up now. As far as allowing kids to apply, I think we get 25 kids almost immediately now. We are reached, this year, we are seven of this, seven of them?
Yeah, seven of them are from the Peoria Heights Grade School.
Seven, seven of the students are from Peoria Heights Grade School, so it's a fairly good representation of the local Peoria Heights area here. But this really, this year, we're working with Amazon, AWS, and we're taking the opportunity to actually introduce artificial intelligence and basic machine learning concepts to middle schoolers and junior high students. They are actually going to program and develop an autonomous race car. So, the kids have been super excited this week, great engagement from the students. Looking at, they're already thinking ahead, well, how can I do this with a real car? So, it's, the questions that we get, the engagement we get with the students has really been incredible. As my dad had mentioned, this is not publicly available. The only people that have had the opportunity to work with the autonomous scale race car have been engineers and developers, and they've been in cities like Las Vegas, London, Singapore, and now, and Chicago, and now it's actually happening here in Peoria Heights. So, Peoria Heights is the first non-AWS event, but AWS is working directly with us. We have engineers onsite that are traveling here. They're going to be engaged with us as well, helping us coordinate the event. We will be having a public race. The kids will actually get an opportunity to race publicly at the Peoria Heights Grade School this Friday. The races will start at 9:00 a.m. The public is welcome, and it'll be a really great opportunity for the students to actually get to demonstrate, and they'll actually get to talk about what they've learned this week. So, and it's a really exciting opportunity for the kids, for, even for the engineers. We have about six engineers from Caterpillar that are working with us, and it's been a great opportunity for us to actually, this is, this is pretty new technology. The technology on here is, is really cutting edge, believe it or not, in the little RC car. And there's concepts that the kids are, the students are getting exposed to that engineers with 20 years' experience are also just now getting exposed to. So, this is a really great opportunity for the Peoria Heights community, so, thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions, either from the public or from the board here? I think it's really exciting, this year's project, yes.
How do you register to participate in this program, and what is the duration of it? Is it happening, are they learning all year round? Or they just a-
It's just a one week, yes.
One, one week, okay.
And through the U of I extension, Judy Schmidt handles the registration.
Okay.
It's on their website.
Okay.
Pearl Technology also puts it on their Facebook. They try to get it out to all the local schools. We have great representation. This is my fourth year with the program through the township, and to have this many students from our Peoria Heights Grade School, we, you know, saying, "This is Richwoods Township. It's Peoria Heights." Take the interest. And talking to Cory tonight, the kids wore him out, asking the questions.
It was great today.
Yeah, and so, but one thing that a lot of people don't realize, that little vehicle sitting there, and the Raspberry Pi from the last two STEM academies have more technology in them than what the first NASA launch in space had.
That's remarkable.
So, these, this is really amazing. Not to go on record, I can't thank Pearl Technology for their major support in this program. At the end of this, and Cory didn't highlight it, but in July, we're hoping to have all 25 vehicles for the kids, and we're hoping to have another setup to where the kids can program and demonstrate these vehicles again, and each one of those kids will receive that vehicle.
Each one will actually get a car.
Oh, wow, that's fantastic.
Yeah, so they were really, they found out today that they were each getting a car, and it was, they were really excited, so it was really, it was really, it's really been a fun week so far.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for being here.
Thank you.
They originally listed for $249. They're still, they're still in pre-release. They're now up to $399. But this has quite a bit of Amazon technology on it. This is the Amazon Deep Lens. This in and of itself usually sells for $199. This has a onboard computer. The onboard computer, you can plug a, you can plug a display into it, you can plug in your keyboard and mouse, and it's just a, it's a full-blown computer, so, all built on top of an RC car, so.
I'll give you one of those. I think one of the key speakers, and then I'll, I'll stop and ask Cory. Cory, they've been trying to get Sam Karat, who was a professor at Bradley University, who has now ventured out on his own in this field here, and I'm not sure, what is Nex Mowgli or?
Nex Movi?
Nex Mowgli, which is a local group here that's instrumental and behind the scenes and from Tri-County Regional Planning Commission. The planning commission has been very involved, and I sit as a commissioner on that Tri-County, in which they're looking at, hopefully, trying to get this area selected in the grants that are available to start the technology in developing autonomous vehicles.
That is-
So, we're, we're really excited, and thanks for the support. Like I said, I can't thank everybody enough. Thanks to District 325 to host the event come this Friday. Everybody's welcome, 9:00 to noon, please come out and, and watch these kids.
And Don, there's still minimal cost to the kids, right? There are no costs?
There's a minimal $25 registration, but if the student cannot afford it, we do have some funding available.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Hey, Cory, there's a question in the audience.
You have 25 children, seven from Peoria Heights Grade School, working with 18 workers.
So, we have a mixture of Peoria Heights, or, excuse me, Peoria. Do you remember some of the other ones?
Uh, we got St. Thomas, we got Pecan. We cover a pretty good tri-county area.
Oh, the other county, not just Richwoods?
Not, well, yeah, the emphasis is focused for that, but to, to, to fill 25 positions is, is, is pretty difficult, because I know the last three years and that I've worked real hard.
Having things like this is pretty hard.
Yeah, well, I, I guess from what I hear, the planning committee is already looking at another activity for the STEM Academy next year, and as we reach out, we're, I know the planning commission, Dave and I have been discussing that. We know we'd like to get some more partners. I can't say enough, Pearl Technology, without their support, both with staff and financial, this STEM Academy, to be at this point here would, would not be where it's at today without their support.
Cory, Cory, one more, one last question.
How long do you think it's going to be until autonomous vehicles are driving down Prospect?
Well, there's already going to be one driving down town Peoria, right?
I heard that.
So, I think on a limited basis, you'll probably see more and more grow, and it's especially if, you know, grants like this get put forward where there's actually the mapping technology in place, you'll probably see more demonstration sites. The large-scale adoption will probably be, you know, much further out.
Right.
But, so, there's a lot of discussions, you know, until you're, until, some people feel that until you really are, don't need to have a driver, you don't need to have a steering wheel, then it's not ready. Some people think we need what Tesla's offering now, so there's still a lot of discussion within the industry about what level of technology needs to happen for public spaces. Now, controlled spaces, like where I work with Caterpillar, we already have autonomous mining trucks.
Right.
They're in a mine, they're in a very controlled setting, so you can, you limit access, and you can have autonomy. So, maybe, you know, as things get very well-developed and very well-understood, very controlled environment or constrained environment, you probably could have that capability driving around.
Right. One last question for the IT guy in me. What OS is that running?
So, this is running Linux 1604, so it's, it's, it's got pretty cool. I mean, the, the kids are just, the students are just now, you know, they, they don't know what they've got fully yet to fully appreciate it. Some of us that have 20 years' industry experience are like, "Oh, this is so cool," so.
Yeah, one thing is that this, that Dave and Cory were able to work out, they're going to have some support for two months.
Yes, yeah, so the, the kids are actually able to use some, some of the, the AWS services to program this for free.
Awesome. So. All right, guys, again, thanks for being here. One last call for public comment. Going once, going twice, public comments closed. We'll move on to old business. Any old business come before the board? Okay, then, right into new business. The first is ordinance 2019-1594 approving and adopting Peoria Heights Business Development District Number One Commercial Exterior Beautification and Renovation Program. Trustee Kazam, and as for motion to approve that?
Yes, I make a motion to approve this ordinance, 2019-1594, and just to remind my fellow board members, this was discussed at the last departmental committee meeting. It's an ordinance that amends our previous beautification grant application, allowing more expansive classification of projects and that the businesses can apply to.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I know Kevin Shields is here tonight. Beth, do you have anything else you'd like to add before we turn it over to?
Yeah, Kevin's here and also Mr. Pine, so, yeah.
Steve, uh, Kevin and Steve, would you like to?
Yes.
Kevin? I almost didn't recognize you, the tie, Kevin.
Uh, so as you'll recall, we, we did discuss it at the departmental meeting, but for everyone here, um-
So, if I may, Kevin Shields, most of you probably know, he chairs our business- So, if I may, Kevin Shields, most of you probably know, he chairs our Business Development District Committee, so...
Sorry, I should have mentioned that. Kevin Shields, Chairman of the Business District Advisory Committee. So, the original commercial beautification grant program was two years. It expired with the fiscal year this year, so we renewed it. At that time, we also looked at, you know, instead of just putting out the new application with the new dates, we also looked at a few other things, ways to utilize the program more, because we weren't getting a ton of applications. It was mostly facade improvements and signs. I think we had one facade grant that was for identity apparel. Everything else was signs. So, we wanted to open it up to some other businesses, because both facades and signs can kind of be expensive. So, what we did is we expanded this to include landscaping improvements that are hard improvements, permanent improvements. So, things like flower beds in front of businesses, if you want to put a bench maybe in front of your business, things like that. We wanted to expand it just to get more people, more businesses to be able to use that. So, I think that's pretty much the bulk of the changes, unless Steve wants to add anything.
Okay, questions from Mr. Shields? Anything else, Trustee Kazam?
No, nothing left.
We're open for discussion, then.
This gets renewed every year, doesn't it? Did we talk about that too? Is this the one?
Yes. So, what we did, specifically this last year, since we didn't have a lot of activity, it was renewed, and then the funds, Stephanie, correct me if I'm wrong, the funds that were not used were rolled over into this year. So, there is a bigger allocation for this year, which is, again, why we kind of felt comfortable broadening it a little bit.
Ready for the question? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Trustee Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Next, ordinance 2019-1595, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a TIF District redevelopment agreement by and between the Village of Peoria Heights and GMG Junior Corporation, which is otherwise known as the Other Dog. Trustee Kazam, I'd ask for a motion to approve this?
I'm making a motion to approve this.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, anything you want to add, Beth?
I just wanted to explain that this is for the Other Dog, which is moving, well, not exclusively, but Mr. Klein is here to speak to this, I believe, to a location behind Leonardo's Pizza on War Drive, and this ordinance approves and authorizes the use of the TIF District Two redevelopment agreement between the Village and the Other Dog, so that the cost of their move can be offset by this TIF District Two. I hope I'm explaining that correctly.
You did.
Mr. Klein, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
No, you did. So, and also, we have Dave, the owner of the Other Dog here, and Gary Schmidt, his attorney. And this, I would like to preface before Steve goes, a real success story that because of some of the development going on in the Heights, the property that the Other Dog is located in was sold. So, we worked really hard to, we didn't want to lose the Other Dog, we don't want to lose Dave and his business, so I think this is working out really well. So, we're happy you gentlemen are here tonight, and we want a chance to hear from you in a minute, but go ahead, Steve.
Sure, you summarized it very well. I think just a couple of things, I want to make sure that you understand that this is a pay-as-you-go reimbursement. So, the improvements will be made. The new real estate tax assessment then will trigger the initial payments that will be reimbursed back to the developer for the renovation rehabilitation of that site. You know where they're going? Everybody's familiar with the plaza down there on War Memorial on the end, and there's a lot of interior work that needs to be done to finish that out. And that really is the focus of the, the reimbursements are intended to help reduce the cost of the relocating, so you can retain a business here that's already operating. One of the things I wanted to point out to you is that since you would have received your copies that you have in your packet, there is a couple of changes in the language that are really having to do with clarifying some definition in here, because the intention when we met with Mr. Street Matterney's attorney back in April was to provide this pay-as-you-go reimbursement utilizing both real estate tax increment and municipal sales tax that they would generate. But the amount of sales tax that would, that will be reimbursed is dependent upon the increase in sales that occur at that new location over and above what they're generating here at the current location. And the sources of those reimbursements include your 1% share of the state rate, your food and beverage tax, as well as the 1.5% home rule tax that you have available for that, for that site. So, that totals 4.5%. And so, we wanted to add a little bit more language to make that abundantly clear that's what they're entitled to. If they are subsequently included in the second Business Development District that would, that you've been talking about down in that area, that is not included in this agreement. The BDD doesn't exist there at this time, it wasn't applicable. So, that's not going to be part of the reimbursements that they would receive through this agreement. But the other sales tax revenues that you have would be part of that. And it's a 80% of the net increment, the real estate increment, net of what the village's, a prorated amount of what the village is obligated to pay to the school district every year through its intergovernmental agreement, and a little bit of administrative costs. So, you know, we wish them well. We hope that the relocation works for their needs, and you have kept another business here in the Heights.
Thanks for your work on that, Steve. Before we open up for questions and comments, I do want to ask Dave and Gary to come forward. And to the residents down in the Paris and London neighborhood, you're getting one of my favorite Heights resident, or businesses, places to eat lunch, going to locate in your, in your neighborhood. So, Dave runs a great place, wonderful hot dogs and tenderloins, so, welcome, guys.
Thank you.
Would you tell us a little bit about what's going on?
Dave is the owner, he's the majority owner of the corporation that operates the Other Dog, and he can chime in at any time, but he asked me to speak. And the story is, he wasn't looking to move or expand at all, but due to the development that's taking place, and we're very happy about that, probably 10 residential condominiums at that site. Due to great strategizing by your economic consultant, Steve Klein, and work with the village officials and the trustees, we've worked out a mutually beneficial arrangement for Dave to be able to move, but stay in the Heights and be in a larger, much more visible location with the Other Dog. There'll be a larger inside eating capacity, larger kitchen, greater menu, some outside dining, and construction is already underway, and he plans to be moved and operating by the beginning of August.
Wow, that's good.
Guys, move quick.
So, we're just very appreciative to everyone involved in making this work.
It took a few meetings, but we got there.
Yes.
So, trustees, we'd be open for questions or discussion, then?
Sir, before questions, could I get your name for the record, please?
Gary Schmidt.
Thank you very much.
And Mr. Schmidt represents...
Yes, yes, thank you, sir.
Is this in that little strip mall that's kind of behind?
It's 712 East War Memorial Drive. Dottie's is located there. One of the other stores. Yeah, across the street from Allwinds.
Okay.
Leonardo's is on that side.
So, you'll have a stoplight to get in and out of there easily?
By Leonardo's.
Okay.
You turn in there and then swing in to the left.
Anyone else?
And this may be a question from Mr. Klein, but the pay-as-you-go model, does that isolate the taxpayer from any liability if the business were to fail?
So, the pay-as-you-go approach means that the business has to generate the new revenue, both in terms of an increase in the assessment to generate the real estate tax increment, and they also have to produce additional retail sales at that location to generate the new municipal sales tax revenues, a portion of which the village will be reimbursing back to them. So, there's no general fund dollars, there are no other loans, there's no upfront assistance of any kind, and it's all limited to new dollars that will be generated by the, by the business.
So, this business does...
And there's a provision in the agreement that should a bankruptcy, or if it ceases, then the agreement would, would end, would stop.
Okay, anyone else? Are we ready? All right, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Trustee Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Good luck, Dave.
Thank you, guys.
And everyone, please stop down when he gets open and buy some food.
Yeah.
I add one thing to that.
Yep, go ahead, Larry.
If he still has his Bush card, he could have set his Bush card on fire. But it's the money to pay for everything right there.
That's a good idea.
Please try and keep this a night.
Okay, now we'd be at approval of the BDD beautification grant application by Edge by Chef Dustin Allen pending resubmission. So, Trustee Kazam, I would ask for a motion to approve this, please.
I make a motion to approve this.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I do. Go ahead, Beth.
I just wanted to explain that this is being submitted by Chef Dustin Allen at Edge. He's applying for the amended beautification grant that we just approved two votes ago for outdoor signage for the newly opened 12th bar, as well as improved sidewalk signs.
Thank you. Kevin, anything to add to this?
Nope.
And I don't see Dustin Allen here tonight. Dustin, I don't see you anywhere? Okay. Questions, trustees, discussion? All right, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Trustee Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, that passes. Next, approval of the BDD beautification grant application by Heights Development Company pending resubmission. Trustee Kazam, I'd ask for a motion to approve this?
I make a motion to approve this.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, go ahead, Beth.
Similarly to the previous vote, Heights Development Company is applying for the amended beautification grant for the tear-out of a fountain area at Heritage Square and the installation of a patio seating wall and lighting.
Okay, anything to add here, Ms. Shields?
First, I'll, Kevin Shields, Chairman of the Business Development District Advisory Committee. I'll just point out that on this item, as well as the next item, we had quorum. Both Robbie and I abstained, just to make sure that there isn't any appearance of impropriety. We both abstained from voting on that, and it was approved unanimously. The other thing I'll note is, the prior item pending resubmission, as well as this item pending resubmission, the reason for that is, these were submitted under the prior year, just because of the timing, they were submitted under the prior year facade grant program, but now, since it's a new year and it's being approved now, the resubmission is just that the forms will be resubmitted on this year's form, so that's what that means.
Thank you. And just for the record, in case you don't know, Mr. Shields owns Heritage Square, so that's why he's abstaining from this.
Correct.
Okay, anyone else? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Trustee Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Next, approval of BDD expenditure for marketing Peoria Heights Poor Brothers. Trustee Kazam?
I'm...
Ask for a motion to approve?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Sorry.
All right, go ahead, back to you.
I lost my thought pattern there for a second. To explain what this is, this is Robbie Matheson, the owner of Poor Brothers. It was discussed at the last departmental meeting. The board, the BDD and Robbie are asking to approve a $30,000 request for promotional video using these BDD funds.
Okay, Rob, you're here tonight. Before we take questions or get a comment, would you like to come forward, please, and tell us what you're trying to do here?
Yeah, definitely. Thanks for your time, everybody. So, we're, we've been recording the music at Poor Brothers since last year.
Free music, right?
Yeah, free music, as many of you guys know and come enjoy. We appreciate you. So, we were trying to take our music to the next level in our experience, and this was the best way we could figure out, how do we put our experience of Peoria Heights into 200,000 households? And we got with the people in charge of WTVP, they agreed to air the shows, and I'm happy to say that this past Saturday, our first airing went on WTVP. They reported back that they had, you know, great ratings and a lot of phone calls into the station saying, "What's this, and how do we get more?" So, they're very excited about, you know, the content that they're getting. So, you know, the Courtyard Concert Series is a whole animal in itself, I guess. Basically, you know, our numbers show that we bring in close to 40,000 people. And, you know, I don't know if there's a bigger impact, you know? I mean, we've, we've been able to do this because of everything before us in the Heights, but we're, we're ready to take it to the next level. And we've been doing that now for, this is our, this is our fourth music season, our third season open, and we hope to continue to do that. And I was receiving emails, phone calls, and text messages during the airing on Saturday. Some people were in other bars in different communities, and they were like, "What is going on? How did this happen?" And I said, "Well, we live in a great place called Peoria Heights."
I missed that, so, could you, would you have a link you could send Sarah that she could send out to all of us?
Sure. Yeah, they're gonna, it's, it's basically gonna run every Saturday night at 10:30 on WTVP. It's right before Austin City Limits, which is a nationally syndicated show that highlights national music, and we're doing a local version. The quality on a full TV screen was incredible. I was very proud that LNV Productions, who we worked with on this, they did a phenomenal job and, you know, had really no financial guarantee, they just took a risk. And that's, we've been able to raise $30,000 in sponsorship money, and now we're asking for the other $30,000. I think this is, I mean, I'm a true advocate of Peoria Heights, but I don't know if you can find a better piece of advertising for our village. I think this thing is going to continue to grow, and we'll have to talk to Chief Sutton at some point, but I think there's going to be the potential for some large road closure, which is sometimes hard work, but I think it pays off financially. Just on Saturdays, I can tell you, we generate, I mean, probably $400,000 in sales just on these concerts. And, you know, but, you know, we, it's free. We don't charge a ticket price. If I charged a ticket, I would use the ticket money to help pay for this, but we have never charged for a single concert, and this is our way to market the village. And if you watch the videos, I invite you to do that, I think Sarah sent out the links to all the videos, or the first four. You know, we took a drone and captured the Heights Tower, we did Grainview Drive shots. Some of our future episodes will show interviews at Tower Park, Grainview Drive. This thing is very Heights-centric, and that's who I am, so I didn't want it to be a bar-centric show. You will notice that you probably do not see a Poor Brothers sign at all before the show. Maybe after it, there's a, there's a quick snippet, but that was intentional. We wanted this to be more of a community program.
Well, Robbie, I love that, and I love the way you operate, and I know you're in business to make a profit, but when you offer free music, and what excites me is that everyone in Peoria Heights can come up and listen to the music. And we're trying to do movie nights that are free, we've done trunk-or-treat, we've done an Easter egg hunt, we did Christmas. We're trying to do a lot of things for the residents that live here that don't cost them anything, and you're doing that on the business side, so I really appreciate that.
Yeah, I appreciate that a lot, thank you. And I said this last time, I mean, if it wasn't for the neighborhood accepting it, and if it wasn't for the police department not breathing down our necks about every little thing, and the trustees, you know, I mean, we couldn't do this. So, now, we're on to something big, and now it's time to take it to the next level.
Thank you. Okay, so, back to you, Trustee Kazam, if you don't have any further remarks, then we'll take comments from the board.
Well, I don't have any further remarks. I do have a few questions, and first of all, I really want to, you know, commend you, Robbie, because I think you run an amazing business up there, and I know it's, you and your business have been very supportive of Peoria Heights for a long time. Just so we can understand it better, and I'm embarrassed to say that I did not watch it. I must have been sent it, and I missed it, so I apologize about that, and I will watch it this evening. Does this recording generate any revenue? Like, if you play it, then does it generate revenue? And who benefits from that revenue?
Sure. At this point, the content is not being sold to any, anybody. I guess in the future, we hope to sell it, and that's not, that's not our goal today. We don't have any, we don't have any conversations happening, but in order to keep this going, I would hope that we can sell this content at some point so that we can pay for future episodes. Right now, there's been no sale transaction, so that's why we're relying on some BDD tax money to help get this thing off the ground, but as of right now, we don't have any, any other television channels or anything like that. We are going to institute a YouTube channel, which is the second most visited, you know, site in the world.
Yeah.
You're gonna be able to see it there anytime. Instead of waiting for 10:30 on Saturday, you're gonna be able to pull it up. This is going to be on Poor Brothers' website, Slowhand's website. This is, the Village, the Village, the Village of Peoria Heights is gonna have full access to it for their purposes. So, yeah, it's, it's going to be shared, too. This doesn't belong, this doesn't belong to me, this belongs to the community.
So, it's really, right now, exclusively for marketing purposes of the Heights and Poor Brothers?
Right, and I think that...
That was the motivation, that was the impetus behind this.
Right. How do we grow what we do?
Okay.
And how do we also celebrate the village? That was why we did it, and, you know, I got more excited seeing the tower footage than I did the music footage, and so...
I'm mad at myself that I have to go home and watch it. So, this is a large amount of money, $30,000.
Sure.
It's more than I think anyone else has gotten for marketing.
Sure.
I don't know if, if we want to have an explanation from the BDD, from Kevin, about what was originally, you know, scheduled for marketing for the annual budget. I mean, I think it's more, right? It's more, there was $10,000?
Right. Yeah, originally, there was $10,000 budgeted, and I think, I think we just didn't know.
Yeah.
You know, I think when we started to look at the BDD, we had this framework of signage and beautification.
Right.
And, and my argument's always been, you know, how do we, how do we grow the business district? And I've always said that you gotta be in Peoria Heights to see a sign, you gotta be in Peoria Heights to see a landscape bed, but if I can take Peoria Heights and put it in everybody's household, you know, a $12,000 sign that I have to see when I'm here is, I mean, I personally think $30,000 is really low for the value of what, with the impact of this is going to be, because you can see it sitting in your, in your house, and then you, it's an instant reminder, "Well, let's go to Hearth next Saturday. Poor Brothers has music." I think it's just a constant reminder that Peoria Heights is the place to be, and so I feel like it's the best billboard we can possibly invest in as a community.
So, if I may just interrupt here, Trustee Kazan, am I understanding your previous question that you think maybe these programs could be picked up by other public television regions? Is that what you were getting at?
I was just curious if, yes, I do believe that, and then I was wondering if this video itself would generate income, and then, I don't know legally how that would work, if that revenue would come from, I mean, come to you or come to the village?
Okay. And I think that's a good question, because I personally believe that, once this gets going, it could have other interests from other public television stations in the region, and I don't know, Counsel, if you, what you're thinking about that, but...
It's a question of who owns the video, right? Right.
So, who does?
Right now, LNV Productions would, because they've invested the $900 to create it with no financial guarantee, so, you know, I know a good attorney sitting here tonight, we can, we can all sit down and discuss this at a further, two good attorneys, two good attorneys, so, but we can, we can discuss this. It's always been an unknown. Like, we've got a, unfortunately, we've got a group of guys that are just trying to do something really cool, and it's working out, you know, and I think, it's definitely, once this thing gets going, it's definitely time to sit, sit down again and figure out what the next step is on that scale, because, you know, to be honest with you, we didn't even think about it.
Right, so that, but the creation, the funds, the $60,000 that are being paid to create this video, they didn't purchase the right, that money didn't purchase the rights of the video, the people that created it still own it?
Right. But they're willing to.
So, what was the $60,000, what did the $60,000 cover?
The entire production of the entire series.
So, it's just paying for them to actually create it, but not for you to own it?
Right.
What will it take for you to own it?
A meeting. I can just, because I can cut this off at any time. I can say, "You no longer have access to the concerts," and it's over, but we don't want that to happen, so we've, we've always had some, you know, some small conversation of what happens if it gets big.
Right.
And it's always been, well, we definitely need to sit down and talk about that, but at this point, we just haven't got there. But we definitely want to do that.
Do you have some kind of agreement with them that they can't sell this out from underneath you?
I'm a handshake kind of guy, and I trust people I work with, and, I mean, I know you guys are protecting me right now, but I'll be okay. Trust me.
I, I'd kind of like for you to get some writing, something down on paper. I mean, $60,000, I mean...
I think you should own the copyrights at that price.
Right. I mean, I have full rights to it. I don't know if you're questioning, I have full rights to it. I can use it however I want, but if it comes to selling the product, then I'm gonna have to have an agreement with them on a larger scale.
Yeah, but right now, they could turn around and sell that content for money, that you, you know, and then you have investors in the BDD putting into it, and then they're gonna profit that money, then what happens?
Right.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Counsel, do you know how that works?
Yeah.
If you, if they own the copyrights, what, have they just given them permission to use it?
The agreement is that it, they will be aired on WTVP, so beyond that, it does become a battle of who owns those rights, and that's just subject to whatever agreement you strike with the company that does the production. But by doing the production, they, in the absence of any agreement, would have the rights to it.
I understand that. I just feel better if we have a little bit of something in writing to...
Yeah, we've had some prior discussion. Yeah, we've had some prior discussions, and I know even like with the individual sponsors, it was, I mean, Rob's dealt with a lot, so one of the things we talked about was specifically, that you either outright purchase it, that's what the $60,000 is, or it's, it's a license to use it in whatever manner you want. Preferably, it's an outright purchase it, and I think the question regarding like monetization of it, I think that's even more important when it comes to things like YouTube, when YouTube's gonna run ads on it, and that kicks in. Now, it's not gonna be a lot, but if they cut you a $15 check, where does that go?
Right.
And I think that also becomes important, whether it's a license or a copyright, but I think from a BDD standpoint, our preference would be, and I don't know that, that they've said that they have an issue with it, is an outright purchase of the content, because specifically, if it's being used for marketing, I think it's important that we own the content so we can use it however we want. That would be my opinion. If there's an issue with that with them, I think you can have a conversation about whether you just want some sort of global license to use the content however you see fit, but I think our, from a BDD standpoint, the preference would be an outright purchase of the content.
Right.
But Robbie, you, but what you said is if you purchase it, then it stops, all this production stops?
No, he's, I'm sorry.
No, I mean, if, if we were to purchase this, the production keeps going, like, we're gonna find a way to keep it going, whether it be sponsorships or selling the content for, moving forward.
So, you would have to pay the $60,000 and more?
No, I actually have full rights to it right now. I mean, I don't have a document with me, but I have complete, I'm a producer of the episodes. If you watch the videos, you'll see, produced by, my name's first. So, I mean, I have full rights to it. We've had discussions over the phone with Kevin Shields, so I appreciate him coming up. We just haven't quite got to the level that you're at, you guys are asking at this point, because the first thing was just getting it on WTVP, getting this thing launched, and then growing it from there. You know, it's hard enough to get it where we're at.
One of the things I'm worried about, Robbie, is if we don't own the copyrights, we want to use it beyond WT, whatever.
Right.
Like, if I watch that session, I'm a millennial, straight, but I worry about them charging us...
Sure.
...to use the, to use the material.
Right. Well, in our, they, they visited one of our BDD meetings, and they made it very clear to the BDD group that the content would be fully authorized for the Village of Peoria Heights, and that was in a, that should be in the minutes of the BDD meetings that we had, and I promise you on that.
Can we agree to this contingent on the contract?
Actually, trustees, just as a point of order, this particular item has to be sent to Klein's office once an amount is determined for redevelopment agreement to be written, so this issue will be coming back to the board. Specifically tonight, what we need to know is how much the board wants that contract to be written for.
Could we secure copyrights on that final?
Yeah, you guys, tell me what you need, and I'll, I'll get it done. I'll make it work.
So, today, we're gonna say, "We'll prove it for this amount with these conditions, it's gonna go to Steve Klein, and then we'll come back."
Yes, and I'm not even sure Counsel or the mayor could speak on this, I'm not even sure if a vote needs to be taken so much as a consensus.
Steve, you're hearing all this, so can you help us out with what we're trying to accomplish?
Once an agreement is drafted, it will need to come back before the board.
I'm not, I'm not the attorney...
Right.
...that knows that in our office.
You'll...
But anytime the village is gonna provide funds to a private entity or person for reimbursement of an eligible expense, it has to be in a written agreement, okay? So, we just need to have direction from the village as to the amount and any conditions upon which that money is being provided can all be included in this written agreement that'll come back to you for your approval.
So, if anyone wanted to amend the motion to add any additional language, that would be okay with the chair guided by...
Absolutely.
...our counsel?
Yep.
And, but it also seems like, I mean, just so I'm understanding everything, I understand that language and I agree with it. Just to be clear, $30,000 has already been paid to the LNV Production Company by donations that you've procured privately.
Correct.
And then, you're asking for another additional $30,000 to finish paying for this bill to the same production company, and that money's coming from the BDD, which other businesses pay into via this 1% tax that they're charging to their tenants, to clients, rather. So, I just want to put that out there, I mean, maybe everybody else understood that, but are we okay with that 30, that number, that $30,000 number?
Well, you had a consensus on that, didn't you, from the vote?
Yeah.
The other business owners that sit on the BDD committee?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yeah, we actually had a vote twice, because it wasn't an action item on the first agenda, so it was, it was voted and then revoted and unanimously approved.
Okay. And so, those that don't sit on there that don't vote, have you talked to any of them? How, do they feel okay about it, and...
I haven't really spoken to a lot of those folks, so...
Let me just, if I interject again, so, just for the record and everyone understands, when we created this Business Development District, I felt pretty strongly that since these businesses were collecting a tax for the village, that they should have a voice in how that tax money got spent, and we asked, I asked, every business owner in the BDD, or gave them the opportunity to serve on this committee, and a lot of people took us up on that. So, Trustee Mariscal, there are some that aren't on the, but the BDD's a pretty active committee, and I know that depending on the time of year, the attendance might ebb and flow, but I think the minutes are certainly dispersed, everyone in the BDD, are they not, Stephanie, or Dustin? The BDD minutes are dispersed to everyone in the...
Right, we do get those.
But not, not just the trustees, but the other businesses, so...
Oh, okay.
I'm not sure about that, Mayor.
Okay.
I think it's dispersed to the board.
Just to the board.
I don't know, what I'm, what I'm checking is, I think it might be on our website, and if not, then we can work on that.
Okay, well, those are all published, that's a public meeting that...
It is a public meeting.
Okay.
They're available for anyone to request.
So...
Can we, so, I would like to amend it, right? Like, I'd like to amend this motion that he, we obtain the copyright and allow this production company rights to use it, to protect Robbie, to protect the village.
Is that your amendment, Trustee DeBoer?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Trustee Kazan, are you seconding that? Okay.
And I, I have to admit, I know, I hate to be the no-girl. My kids would say I'm really good at it, but I'm, I am having angst about the dollar amount. I have to admit that, and I would like to make a motion to reduce that dollar amount.
Right now, we're on the amendment.
Oh, sorry.
Let's tackle this, this amendment first, then we'll be subject to other amendments, so...
Okay.
Counsel, do you understand that?
Yes.
And, is that agreeable to you, Rob? Is that something you...
Oh, look at a different number.
The amendment?
No, that's the...
Oh, the copyright, yeah, I think, I think you guys are on to something. I appreciate you guys and your foresight. Thank you.
Okay, so let's, discussion on the, on the amendment only right now. Anyone have trouble with that?
So, the amendment is to amend the, to secure the copyrights.
It would just add an additional level of language that everyone, go ahead.
The amendment, I think, properly stated would be that the board is going to approve that funding, subject to an agreement with the production company that the village owns the copyrights, and the production company can have a limited license.
Thank you, and, and stated earlier, that final, that final contract would come back to us for approval as well.
So, are we, are we talking approving the amount of $30,000?
No.
Not yet, not yet.
Not yet, not yet. We haven't the money yet, just the...
Just on this amendment.
Okay.
So, the amendment as a contract is contingent on securing copyright, but that may, getting to Jeff's point, that may increase the final dollar amount, because if they're, they're planning on licensing it to us and not actually releasing it to us, sometimes there's a higher charge for actually owning it.
So, that's where we're at now. Any, any discussion on the amendment as far as protecting the village's rights to have control over the, the video? Anyone else on that? Okay, so let's call the vote on that, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
Trustee Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Kazan.
Aye.
Trustee Gat.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
Trustee DeBoer.
Aye.
Okay, that passes, so now we're back to the main motion as amended.
Correct.
So, now, we're back to the main motion with this one amendment. Any other discussion on the main motion as amended?
I think Kazan was wanting to amend...
Go ahead, I'm sorry, Brandon.
We were...
He was saying you wanted to amend the...
Amend the cost.
Yeah, well, I would like to discuss amending the cost being dispersed to this, and I say that again, I really am complimentary of everything you're doing, and I think that this could benefit the Heights greatly and your business. I just have sat in just one of those meetings, and I know what the budget is for the year, and I realize that I'm new to this, but $30,000 is a lot of money, and we're only six months into this fiscal year, so if anybody else has any comments about that...
So, I believe last time, they were, maybe Shields commented to this, but there was an excess of funds.
I was gonna say, Stephanie, can you update us on what the funds, what the funds are?
Okay, so...
They're running a deficit for this year, but they had rollover funds.
Okay, so, last year, the BDD had budgeted $50,000 for the BDD facade grant program. They also had budgeted some funds for public infrastructure improvements. The BDD grant fund did not use all of its funds. The BDD revenues came in higher than anticipated, and also, the public improvements did not occur in the last fiscal year. As a result, last year, the BDD had a surplus. Because of that, when budgeting for this fiscal year, a deficit was budgeted. It was a planned deficit, and the purpose of it was that we were going to roll over the unexpended funds for the BDD grant facade program, and also complete the public infrastructure projects that we had planned. So it caused a deficit in the budget, but as a whole, as an aggregate, the fund has reserves and it has money to cover that deficit. Now, that being stated, the budget includes $10,000 for marketing, and this $30,000 would either cause that deficit to increase in an unplanned deficit, or the BDD would have to find savings somewhere else to offset that increased cost.
Did they spend their marketing budget last year?
They did not spend their marketing budget last year, no.
Okay.
How much is in the reserve?
How much? I don't have that figure off the top of my head. Well, I can tell you what, I can tell you what's in the account right now, but that doesn't, I mean, that's not the reserve for it. That's just what's literally in the account. As of May 31st, the fund had $339,678.20.
Robbie, how much did your businesses pay into the BDD this year, so far? Have you, do you know how much roughly, how much did you pay in this year?
Um, I think, well, I don't know about this year, but I can tell you, in 2019, we'll probably pay in about $13,000, is what I anticipate.
And do you put that one, you pay that, right? You take that out of your profit, you're not charging that to your patrons, which is typically what the other business owners-
Right. Or, you know, you come in and you buy a drink, it's a $4 beer, we don't add, we don't add the 1% tax to anything, because we don't want our staff dealing with a lot of loose change. It just takes up time and energy. So Poor Brothers essentially pays the 1%. But we value it, because the Business Development District is very powerful for the expansion of our community.
So is it $13,000 just off Poor Brothers? What about Slowhan?
I'm sorry, that is a combination of Poor Brothers and Slowhan. I did some quick math. And, you know, yeah.
Thank you. I don't know, again, I think we're back to what Mayor Phelan said, and that was that this money should be used for things that the Business District is interested in. I think, I don't think a lot of it has gotten used, because people haven't been applying for these grants. You didn't use any of the marketing last year. I realize it's going to roll us into an unplanned deficit, but in all reality, the money is there. Am I correct on that, Stephanie?
Uh, yes, it's going to reach, they have long-term reserves that they are currently building up. I know that there's $70,000 in that. I'm not sure what other funds are available, but they do have long-term reserves that could be eaten into, if nothing else.
And I also just see it as, it's not just for you. I like the fact that it's promoting everything. And you're right, just putting up a sign, or you'd actually have to drive through the Heights to see what we've got, where this is kind of putting it out there. I mean, YouTube is huge. A lot of people watch WTVP. And you've already started the project, right? To stop the project and start over with a completely different production company, is that even a possibility for you, to get something that's not quite as expensive?
Sure. Actually, the going rate for the, they've invested 800 hours into this, and I'm not, that's not a joke. I mean, they were over $100,000. That was their typical charge. And then I went to them and said, there's no way that we can get to this level, you know? So they really-
Right, you've got drones flying and everything, taking aerial photos and-
Right, so, yeah.
Of everything.
They gave us a very discounted rate in order to try to get this thing off the ground. Yeah, so thank you.
You've already had votes by the BDD who support this, right?
The entire BDD.
Right.
Yeah, we had no opposition. Yeah, we had no opposition.
As long as you got their support. I mean, you got $30,000, but you guys have the money.
And not to mention, we asked for $70,000 of it, and I know, we hope to intend to pay that back to you, but you did help us out as well. And this only helps us out, I think, as well. So I'm, I'm okay with the $30,000, but I don't know about the rest of the board members.
I'm okay with it after all this discussion, especially with the amendment before, to secure our rights for it. That was my big concern. But, anybody else?
I'm not sure about the procedural, because I, basically, I'm new.
Well, if you want to offer an amendment, and you get a second to that amendment, you-
I don't know that I would, but I would like to offer amendment of $15,000.
Okay, so is there a second to the motion to amend the original ask from 30 to 15,000? Is there a second?
No.
Okay, so that fails due to lack of a second. So we're back, still, any other amendments are open? But we're still on the main question as amended. Anyone else on that?
Just to recap, the $30,000 would not come out of the general fund.
No.
No. No.
Right. And the funds are diverted into the BDD for the explicit use, to being used for the businesses within the BDD.
It has to be used. And Steve can give you a list of items that it can be spent for. But again, so when you go to a business in the BDD, any of those businesses, you're paying an additional 1% sales tax, whether that's Sherman's, or Trevesker's, or Poor Brothers, and there are other businesses. So when you go in there, you're paying an additional 1%. That money goes into the BDD fund. And we, as policymakers, in the end, get to decide within those parameters how to spend that. But we have, again, created this committee to let the business owners collecting that tax recommend to us how they think it should be best spent.
Right.
But no, no general funds at all, at all, would be used for this.
Right. Just wanted to make sure I understand how the BDD works. So, no general funds, and the Business District is using the service. So I'm okay with it as well.
That's true.
And Poor Brothers isn't charging for that 1%. Just make sure everybody knows that.
Making it out of his profits.
Yeah.
Well, and Robbie brought up a good point, and we had this talk too, a year ago, when one of the trustees wanted to increase the sales tax, which I was strongly opposed to. But if you think about this, he mentioned he charges, for some of his beers, $4. Well, when you add another 1% to that, he doesn't charge $4.04 for a beer, he still continues to charge $4. And typically, not, most business owners do, and then they eat that other percentage and pay it up themselves. But they do collect it at some point. But, so, just to keep that in mind as well. And I also want to say that this is, I really appreciate the conversation that the trustees are having tonight, because on my right sits the administrator, and on my left, the treasurer, and I'm constantly on them about keeping an eye on the budget. Because as you know, we started the year out with a $900,000 deficit in the village funds. And so their job is to be very watchful of how we spend money, and they brought that to your attention, that this is out of, it's not budgeted. But you, as policymakers, can decide how you want to do that. But just to keep that in mind, and all this is going, I think it's a good civil conversation we're having here. So, is there anyone else on this topic? So, as everyone understands, we're voting on, it's to approve $30,000 with amended, with the amendment that would require an agreement to protect the village's rights to the video, correct, council?
Correct, correct.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Trustee Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
I have a question. If I don't agree with the $30,000, but I do agree with the amendment to the rights, how do I vote?
Well, you already voted for the amendment, but you have to vote yes or no on the-
No.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Okay. That motion passes.
All right, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Mr. Kazam, you had, did you have anything, Alexis?
Yeah, I just want to say, like, to me, it seems like the BDD is more of a private, even though it's owned by a different, different business owner. Those people have decided that it's okay for the money to be spent this way, then I don't even know why the council really needs to be involved.
Mr. Kazam, just as a point of order, these are actually public funds. Because they're sales tax funds, they are public funds. That's why the-
Public money.
-board of trustees has authority over it.
My other comment is, first of all, it sounds like a great, I've not seen it, it sounds like a great video, it sounds like an exorbitant amount of money to spend on the video. I think that's highly expensive. We've got a lot of videos for purposes. I just think that, you know, maybe next time, I've got a few clips in there. But I think the Alexis's point, there's 24 minutes long, so that's the difference in the scope here. I agree with you.
Okay.
Okay.
So, 4,000 videos is what this is costing.
All right, well, thank you then.
Thank you.
So, we would be at Resolution 2019-3, a resolution approving village staff raises. Trustee Gett, I'd ask for a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I do, okay. Any discussion? Or, before we take any questions, would you explain, Chief, what we're doing here, or Jeff?
All right, we have six employees in the village, full-time employees, who are not any part of the bargaining units, the unions and stuff. And we are going to discuss this, that it's a good idea to give them a wage increase for cost of living of the, what the union had gotten, of 3%. And then later on in the year, subject to village board approval, based upon the village administrator's evaluation, they can receive anywhere from 0% to 2% bonus, if you have to stipend, however you want to put it. And that's what we're looking to do here. Because they're the only ones who didn't get an increase, and we're just trying to take care of our employees.
Thank you. And this resolution only approves the wage increase, so, go ahead. Correct. We've been discussing this since last April. We've had a lot of, a lot of discussion on this. I know we've been working with Eric Christian from HR FIT, and I'll have him come up here in a minute and talk about the changes. Last meeting we had, it was requested that a couple of the trustees had some questions regarding the year-end evaluation merit raise. So we had a meeting, and we did change the Resolution 2019-03. So that's what you have in front of you now. So if I could have Eric Christian come up, please, and just kind of go over what transpired during that meeting, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Evening, everyone. So there's the two resolutions there. I know we're talking about the staff raises. I can speak more about the compensation policy here in a moment when that's appropriate. But there were questions that came out of the last discussion we had, that a couple of trustees, trustee Mariscal, trustee Weisenberg-
And before we take questions, just to tell you a little bit about Eric. He was the assistant HR director for Perea County. He then went on to become the HR director for Dunlap Schools, and now he has his own company. So we use him on an as-needed basis to help us get through HR and personnel matters. So, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. So, we sat down with those trustees and heard some of their concerns. What you have before you tonight reflects the administrator's recommendation in terms of what he thinks is appropriate for those salary increases for this year. You notice that that amount is up to, I should say, up to a 5% for this year. 2% of that would be determined by potential merit increase. That would come out of the tool that we're working on currently. And then, it's only good to have, first of all, a solid tool when you're tying pay back to merit. Secondly, it's only fair for the employees to know what they're being graded on, essentially. So they would need to see that before we would roll that kind of thing out. And then ultimately, that would have to be approved by the board, whatever recommendation would come forward later. So I guess on the increases themselves, I guess that's what I'd say at this point, the more I can share in the compensation policy.
So, questions, trustees?
Sure. In the last meeting that we had, it was determined that both increases were merit-based, the 3% and the 2%.
So I think the way, it's really an issue of how you look at the terminology. Short answer is, they both are going to reflect the merit and performance going forward. This 3% that you're looking at now, as Administrator Sutton has said, he wouldn't be recommending that if he hadn't seen the solid performance from those folks. And that really reflects the kind of traditional raise structure you've had in the past. What we'd be looking at going forward is implementing this combination of a COLA, cost-of-living adjustment, and also this merit increase. That's, I'm getting a little bit into the compensation policy now, but we're looking a little bit of a transition. So I guess on it, you could say that this year's up to that 5% is really going to reflect merit. The first part is under the traditional raise structure. That other 2% would be under the new merit structure.
And then we agreed also that we would look at inflation rates for the COLA. I mean, it wouldn't always be 3%. Every year, we would vote different, I mean, we would vote on a new contract, correct? And so on and so forth. And I did notice that some of the changes that, or some of the things that we discussed, that we would like to see changed, they are reflected in here. So I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
That those were adjusted. I wish we all could have been present, but some of the concerns, are you okay, trustee Weisenberg, with some of the things that we have discussed? We talked about so much stuff in there.
Yeah. Personally, I think the 5% total is a bit excessive. Calling around to a few people that work in major employers in the area, 0% to 3% increase a year is what is average. Some people don't get any increase. So I do think the 5% is a bit excessive. You know, this year, we've borrowed $70,000 from the BDD to pave streets. Last year, we rose taxes on people to cover fees with the trash, to cover deficit issues. And with all the issues we have rolling out of Springfield, all the fees and all the taxes, and how heavily reliant the village is on restaurants, typically when taxes and fees go up, people start to tighten their belt, and they dine out less. It's the easiest thing to, easiest thing to give up. So I am worried that it's a bit excessive. And maybe it's a timing thing that worries me the most. But I just-
Now, did you not say that we are going to, we're not voting on the bonuses right now? I mean, it could be 0% if, when it comes to the end of the year. Am I correct in saying that?
That's correct.
Based on what are, where we're at budget-wise, what we've got, what we've had to spend, maybe we'll have expenditures that we're not anticipating, and we just won't have the money for it. Am I correct in saying that?
The way that we've set it up is that we're not locking the village in on that merit increase now, or in the compensation policy. The actual, the dollar amount, the percentage that might be allocated, that's after the fact, after the administrator's made his recommendation to you.
And then my other question is, is if they do receive the bonus, that is a one-time percent bonus, it does not get figured into their base salary? Or am I mistaken on that? Because that makes a difference, too. Because if you're going to raise the entire base salary, you're looking at more to increase on the following year.
That's correct. So the board can have their discretion of how they want to award that from you, that compensation policy isn't going to lock you in for that very reason that you said. There may be years where financially, you feel like you can give something, but perhaps you don't feel like you want to add it to the salaries. Or maybe you feel like, from a market standpoint, you want to keep rewarding your employees, but you don't want their salaries to keep growing, because you don't want to outpace the market in that situation. You can give them that flat bonus. It's not going to increase their salaries, but then they could, could still get that amount, so.
Well, I was to understand, when we talked about this, that was what this was. It wasn't an increase in their salary. It was, they were going to get a bonus at the end of the year. The, if it's merited, if Chief Sutton here, in their evaluation, if he thinks they have it coming, we're not looking to increase their salaries in the long run to 5%. We don't want to hurt the village. We want to, but this way, they can get rewarded for all their work. And Chief Sutton, he'll be mindful about how much is spent. He's done a real good job since he's taken over, so.
So, I have a question. Do union employees are guaranteed a 3% every year, or that changes from year to year?
Depends upon the collective bargaining agreement we've agreed to. And those are time events. So some are three years, some are five years.
Okay.
The one we just agreed with the laborers' union is a five-year contract.
So for five years, they're getting 3%?
Correct, yes.
We have six non-union employees, right?
Yes. And then also, keep in mind that the Fraternal Order of Police represents the police officers.
And they tell us how much the person-
They have a, we have a collective bargaining agreement with them.
Okay, so, how do we give, not give 3% to the one person who has constituents that are already getting 3%, and expect him to do the same job?
Well, and again, this is a policy decision. This is typically how a lot of boards operate. They budget money annually for raises for exempt employees, and you usually try to give them something similar to what those in the collective bargaining units that you've agreed to. So, you know, I want to make sure we're comparing apples to apples here and oranges to oranges. So I, in my mind, we're doing a couple of things here. One, we're giving raises to the exempt employees, very similar to, almost exact, to what those in the collective bargaining units have received. And then, two, trying to run this organization more efficiently, and more like a business, we are authorizing, if we pass this, our administrator, who, under our ordinance, is tasked with running this village day-to-day and running the village operations. So we would give that administrator, our administrator, a tool that could incentivize employees for exceptional performance based on an annual review and on their performance. That could be 0, it could be a half percent, it could be a percent, it could be, we are capping it at 2. But annually, when the board votes to authorize the budget, this money will be in the budget. So the board could put it in the budget, or they could take it out. And I personally want to make it clear that we don't, we don't have any crystal ball that is going to forecast what the economy is going to do next year, or three or five years from now. So if something, there would be a bubble with the economy, and we'd have a terrible recession again, then I think the board would certainly have to look at what we're going to do with raises. And I know when I was on the county board, that we laid off a couple hundred people, and some people got, in the exempt, got nothing. They got zeros for a few years, and some of the unions at that time, we had a wage opener where we bargained with them to, that they got zeros. So those are things that you hope don't arise, but if they come up, then I can't imagine our current administrator recommending a raise that we couldn't afford. But also, we're a much smaller organization today. We have fewer people working here in administration than we did two years ago. So we are, and that work didn't go away. We don't have less work today. We have the same amount of work, and some people are doing a lot more. And I think having an administrator to, again, properly evaluate them with the right tool, that it's fair, that if they see where they deserve some sort of a raise for exceptional performance, or maybe handling a project that was thrown into their lap, then I think that's a good practice. And again, we're probably talking about $4,000 or $5,000 here in this entire budget. We're talking four or five people in the $50,000 range, do the math, if they all got the 2%. So, we closed a $900,000 gap here in this village, and I, we did impose some fees, but primarily, in my mind, that was closed by our employees. I mean, Public Works is more efficient. Fire gave up a vehicle. Police gave up dispatchers, and on and on and on. We have less people working in administration. So I personally congratulate the employees for the good financial shape that the village is in. And I think this is a good practice to have an administrator evaluating people, because for what I'm told, the longest time, people did not get evaluations. And I think people should be held accountable for good work, and they should, if they're not performing, they should also be held accountable.
So, just a few things. This is the first year we've given bonuses, I think.
We're not giving bonuses. We are authorizing that, the concept.
This is the first year that we've authorized a resolution that says employees are eligible for bonuses at the end of the year.
That I'm aware of. That anyone with any kind of history here, that maybe trustee Gett or trustee Carter might-
So this is something unprecedented. We've never-
It is new.
-told employees that they're eligible not only for merit-based raises, but also a merit-based bonus at the end of the year.
As far as we know, that is correct. It's not uncommon, and I think we- It's not uncommon, and I think we did that at Peoria County when you were there, Eric, didn't we not?
So, if we're trying to match the non-union employees with what the union employees get, what are the chances that's going to happen in reverse, and the union employees are also going to want the bonuses at the end of the year?
Their honor contract.
When we go up to renegotiate the contract, what are the chances that the union will request or demand the same bonuses that the non-union employees are getting?
We would, I wouldn't expect that, but we would tell them no, that we're not interested in bargaining a contract until it expires. That would be my answer.
When it goes up for renegotiation?
That would be five years from now, and that could be a different council, a different mayor, and a different administrator. But I would expect that they would, you sit down and you bargain collectively, and there are parameters that, that are set by the National Labor Relations Act that requires people to bargain in good faith. Both parties would have to bargain in good faith. So, I think the labor's, the labor's business agent told me, and the guys in the bargaining unit, that they were very happy with their 3%. We accomplished that in one meeting, but you can't predict what's going to happen in the future when economic things change and when the people change, so.
And these bonuses are not a guarantee. It says right there, 0 to 2. You capped it off at 2. They could get absolutely nothing. I mean, what it has to do, and this is yearly. I mean, if we realize we can't, we don't have it, well, it won't happen. They're not guaranteed a bonus. It's just...
I think that's the point, and that's the reason we had this changed from our meeting, is that we didn't want to be locked into something, that if we get to a point, and I just, me along with the help of the trustees at the time, dug out of a $900,000 deficit, and we're not going back in that hole. So, if we get to a point at the end of the year, and we do not have those funds, I will not be recommending that. So, you know, this will be something we'll look at annually. But as far as trying to forecast what the union contract will be, I can't tell you that. Or forecast where we'll be, I have a good idea where we're going to be at the end of the year, and it looks good. But again, we were still, you know, we need to get a few years under our belt before, you know, we get to where we need to be. But as far as trying to forecast that, I think, I think we're getting out, getting out ahead of this. That's why this has been worded that way. So, at the end of the year, I will bring in the recommendation to the board, and then you can make a decision. You'll have the numbers in front of you to make a decision. So, we won't be, we won't have to sit here and guess about it, how, what could it should have been, or what's going to be. You know, we'll, we'll have hard numbers, and I think that it will help you make your decision. Well, and one thing to keep in mind too, the employees covered by collective bargaining agreement, when they work past their work hours, they get time and a half. And these employees do not. When you see the administrative assistant taking minutes here late at night, or you see the treasurer staying late, or any of these employees, they're not getting time and a half. They're getting comp time. And I tell you, both the administrator and myself, we, you know, we can be demanding of this staff, and we might be emailing them or calling them at night or on weekends, and they're outstanding about performing outside of working hours. So, again, this may occur, it may not, but it's up to the administrator to evaluate and decide on an amount. But again, it's up to 2%. And it's something that you will budget annually, and if you don't like the way the process went, then if I were a trustee, I wouldn't, I would mark that out of the budget. Anyone else? Okay. Eric, anything else to add?
Nothing from me.
Trustee Gett, this is your comment. Anything else, Jeff?
I don't have anything else to add to it.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Trustee Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Nay.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Next, we have the Resolution 2019-4, Resolution approving village compensation policy. Trustee Gett, I'd ask for a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I do. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Trustee Gett.
Okay, we have a, compensate, you know, Chief. Village of Peoria hides policy to develop and adhere to consistent and transparent compensation practices. The village shall establish pay that considers internal equity, labor market considerations, total compensation, characteristics such as knowledge, skills, and abilities required of the work in the village's economic condition. It is the goal of the village to set compensation that attracts, motivates, and retains a high-quality workforce, supports the village's commitment to diversity with equitable pay and benefits for staff in similar positions and with similar levels of responsibility, promotes organizational effectiveness, and maintains public trust in fiscal stewardship. So, to achieve these goals, Chief, do you want to go ahead?
This is the same document that we talked about last meeting. Eric, we did make a few small changes. Eric, would you like to touch on those?
Yeah, absolutely. There are a few things that had come out of that meeting. We mentioned a little bit ago with Trustee Mariscal, Trustee Weisenberg, a few important ones. We explicitly stated in there that any compensation changes are subject to board approval. So, that piece is very clearly outlined in there. I clarified some additional language to, we already had it in there, but I made sure it was in all the appropriate places specifying that no employee should assume that there would necessarily be either a COLA or a merit increase in any given year, that that's all subject to financial conditions. Those are really the main changes that came out of this, out of that meeting. And again, the point of this policy is it does a couple of things. Number one, it really establishes a compensation philosophy, which Trustee Gett just read a lot of. It establishes that the board will have a merit-based pay increase structure in some form going forward. And it also helps to put some structure around how some of those things will, will happen, but without binding the board up in any, you know, particular amount year-to-year in terms of the COLA or the merit, but still outline. So, the idea was to give structure, but still provide the board the latitude that it had needed to run the village.
Okay. Any questions on this? Eric, I meant to ask you earlier, and don't want to catch you by surprise, but who, who might be some of the other governmental clients you, you work for, just so we know?
Sure. Your neighbors, the city, do some work for them. They have a fantastic HR team there, as does the county, but do some work for, for them as well, both of those folks. And I'm sure there's other people.
Okay.
That I'm trying to think of offhand, but yeah.
All right. Are we ready for the question on this?
I did have a question on, I thought we had talked about that, under pay actions on promotions, we were going to take that 5% out, just so we weren't locked into that. I mean, do you remember that?
I do, I remember that a little bit differently, Diane. I thought you wanted clarification on the language of how we might handle a promotion as opposed to that, that 5%.
Well, that was in there originally, but I don't think we want it, I mean, 5% isn't always that much based on a promotion. But again, I mean, you're, what, did we want it spelt out that much?
The idea of having that 5%, and that's the only time that there's really a number actually prescribed in there, is that because sometimes employees can, due to longevity or a pay increase history, whatever it might be, you might end up looking for a promotion, but because somebody's been here so long, they, it might actually not be an increase in pay based on where the incumbent was who just left that. So, then the idea was that we're guaranteeing the employees that if you're going to take on some more responsibility, then you're at least getting a 5% bump, which is not a heck of a lot to speak of, but at least we don't find somebody new.
And were we going to try to do pay ranges? We talked about that as well.
We had talked about that, and I'm happy to revisit that again with the board. So, we talked about this concept of pay ranges, of pay bands, whatever you want to call them, where you've got a fixed minimum and you've got a fixed maximum. Long story short, is that I think you can still get that done with your size without having locked yourself into pay grades. I mean, really, we're talking about six employees. Of those six employees, three of them are in unique, very different jobs, and so...
Well, I think what we, what I found anyway that wasn't really fair was that the prior administration, that's why I kind of would like it in writing, the prior administration, the way it looked to me by looking at the forms that we got with the pay rates, was that at some point, that former administration just went, you know what, let's just pay everybody the same exact pay. I mean, whether you are sitting on a degree or not a degree, or whether you have experience or you don't have experience, whether your job entails you being, you know, more specialized. So, when you, if you just, if you don't put any pay ranges in, like, a water clerk coming in versus an accounting person, I mean, how do you, how do you do that? Do you know what I'm saying? Without having a range in there, and just like I said, from stopping it from happening where somebody just goes, you know, let's just pay them all the same. Well, they don't do all the same jobs. They aren't all specialized the same way. They don't all have the same skills. That's the way it looks to me.
And I agree with you, but I think we do that through, you've done the job descriptions and now the requirements for that job, and so...
Is that where we're going to get into more of that, is job description and what the pay salary should be in it, in those jobs?
So, a couple of points here. One, I wouldn't be a concern necessarily about being in a spot where the administrator would say, now here's everybody's pay if you pass this policy, because we expressly state that any changes in compensation have to come before this board. So, that, that piece could not happen.
Okay.
To the other piece about comparing the, the different positions, with, I mean, really, it's just a handful of positions, and I would, with having a broad policy or a pay range policy, I think you could over-engineer the thing for six employees, which, which really is more like three employees. I mean, you have paying, pay ranges like that when you've got folks who are spread out in different spots, reporting to different managers, and you want to make sure that there's pay equity when somebody's coming in or out. And also, when you've got a lot more employees, and when you've got a fair amount of turnover and hiring, so it's, we know exactly where folks are coming in and out, you guys just don't have that. And you can, I think, pretty well get the same thing done by doing annually, taking a look at where the market has your employees, which doesn't take terribly long to do. And then also, just making sure that we file this policy and it comes forward before this, this body, and you're taking a critical eye to it whenever that changes.
Okay. So, I guess that does answer the question, then. Hopefully, that will not happen again in the future where somebody just comes in and says, you know what, you've been here a year, but you've been here five, but I'm still going to pay you all the same even though you're doing different jobs with different lengths of time, with different experience, so.
And I will say that...
That's really kind of what I took away from that spreadsheet that I got, was a lot of things I think were done unfairly to some of the employees, and I'm just hoping that this will stop that.
Well, and I agree with you, Trustee Mariscal, and both Chief Sutton and I are trying to be transparent. I mean, we make our own mistakes, but I think in the past, raises were given that the board didn't even know about. So, you want to make sure that you know about it, that you budget it, and keep you aware of that. And this is a work in progress, and you helped get this started.
Thank you.
So, I want to keep this conversation going. This is one bite of the apple of trying to make things better and not going back to the previous resolution. But part of, part of the thought on the bonus was, is that we want to pay competitive wages. We want to pay people, you know, good wages that we can afford, but we also didn't want to price people out of the market either. So, that's all part of this talk too. So, this is evolving, and I'd ask you to work with Trustee Gett and Dustin and Eric, and we'll get this on the agenda to tackle the things you're interested in.
So, are we going to approve this document as written here? That's what I would have...
So, that's, unless, I'm not hearing...
Well, again, I mean, even with that 5%, we're not, we're, it still has to come before the board, correct?
Right.
I mean, irregardless of whether that 5% is in there or not, if we decided we wanted, we thought that they were, that job was worth 2%, we could do that? Or are we locked into it because we said 5%?
Well, this policy would say it'd come before you at 5%. It would seem to me that then the board would still have the final vote, but that might start to be, get to be a point of procedure that's outside of my expertise.
Yeah, and again, I mean, it's not...
I don't think it's legally binding, and anybody that gets a promotion for 3% instead of 5%, they can choose not to take the promotion if they don't want.
Sure. Okay.
Okay. So, just, just so I'm on the same page here, this policy sets the framework for possibly two increases in income in a fiscal year. That wording, that wording is still in there.
Which, where are we at?
Regarding the cost of living and also the merit bonus.
Right. It gives the board...
Going forward, we're still going to give 3%, up to 3%, and then also a bonus.
You approve 3%, and it could, could be up to 2, but the 3% is part of the base salary, the 2% is not.
Right. Yeah, that's why I refer to it as an increase in income, not necessarily a salary.
And you could adjust those numbers as you see fit from year to year.
Okay. Anything else on this resolution? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Trustee Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Nay.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Next is approval of professional engineering services agreement with Herman and Associates for the Samuel Avenue project. Trustee Carter, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, sure, I'll go right ahead.
Alicia, do you want to, this is for the Samuel project or infrastructure? I'm not sure exactly what...
I'll just introduce this by saying, if you can remember back about two, two and a half months ago, we amended the PH Samuel redevelopment agreement, and then we, in short order, approved the site plan for the first phase of that development. That triggered the village's obligations to do some infrastructure work under that redevelopment agreement. And we talked about that at that meeting, but this is the first step in that, is getting the engineer on board to do the design work and take it away.
No, great history on that, because I probably couldn't have explained it exactly like you did. This is the professional engineering services agreement to design the infrastructure on Samuel, as well as the alleys that surround Samuel, starting at Prospect down to Constantine. Those infrastructure improvements will involve an entire roadway reconstruction, brand-new curb, sidewalk, roadway, lighting, waterline, and storm sewer systems. And then, of course, the alley's new pavement. Katie is here as well, if you have any questions for her. We will get started immediately. The focus will be on the, I guess, elevations, if you will, and the design that is directly adjacent to the four-story complex that is not too far from being started, as well as the first block of Samuel, starting at Prospect down to Columbus, where the first townhomes are going to be constructed here soon. Do you want to add?
Katie, thanks for being patient. When Alicia's done, if you give us an update.
So, as they have worked very hard on their site, there are still some loose ends, some things that we need to figure out in regards to some elevations, so that we don't shoot ourselves in the foot, if you will. We want to make sure that we have good positive drainage on the alleys as well as the roadway. We also are going to take a look at the parking concept out along Samuel. At the zoning board meeting, it was approved. They had two different alternates for parking. One of them was the diagonal parking along the frontage of that property, or the other option was the parallel parking. Once we get into really the nuts and bolts of this, we'll be able to really look at what really works well, as we look at that typical section of how wide that road will be, how wide the sidewalks will be, where they're all going to, where, how everything all fits together. It's kind of a great big puzzle, and we'll work through those pieces. And as we do that, we will be coming to the board and kind of presenting some different concepts, getting your guys' engagement, getting some feedback, as well as the developers, to make sure that this is exactly what everybody wants, because it is going to be transformational. It'll be great. So, that's what this is, is for the engineering.
Okay.
So, this is to, I'm sorry, this is just to approve you getting started on what you need to do, and you will definitely keep us on board.
Yes. Oh, yeah, you guys will be...
Step by step.
Yep.
Thank you, Trustee Carter. Is it okay if we ask Katie for a quick, quick update? Katie?
Yeah.
Your boys are well-mannered back there.
Yes. Sorry, Charles had hockey tonight, so we're momming. But, yeah, so, we are, we got through zoning on the condo building. We're finalizing our financing, and we're ready to get started as soon as we can, but we wanted to, as in the redevelopment agreement, there's the submission for the building permit, which happened a couple months ago, triggers the start of the engineering of the street. And really, that's to coordinate the elevations and the topography when we put new buildings and the topography when we put new buildings on, to make sure the buildings are either not in a hole, or they're not, you know, in a big mound more than we want. Because we haven't acquired every single house on the two blocks, there's not going to be a huge height difference in the street elevation, just because some of those have driveways that go into the front. But really, it's going to enable us to really start to showcase that to our buyers that are wanting to live there and very excited about how the streetscape's going to look, about the sidewalk on both sides. We're going to have streetlights. The infrastructure talks about the electricity coming underground, and then, as much as we can, work with the drainage consideration on that street. I know we heard a lot of that. We're going to be restricted with some hard borders, again, with existing driveways and existing alley access, but we'll try our best, for sure.
Thank you, Katie. Any questions, trustees, for either Alicia or Katie?
Are you still trying to purchase the remaining houses in that area?
Yes. Yes, we still are. We actually were able to, in the last, I'm going to say, 60 days, to be safe, were able to acquire two houses that told us they would never sell on there. And so we're definitely still open and acquiring them as well. We're going to get to the point where we, again, start the engineering, and it's going to be more difficult to give them a very competitive price, because the price we're giving is a very, I would say, good market rate, if not above market with the condition of the market right now, which is prices are going down.
So about how many do you have left, do you think, that aren't-
I'd rather not say at this point, just out loud.
Okay.
But, yeah, on that, so.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you for your project. Thanks for being here to update us. Alicia, thank you. And I don't know if we said, but Alicia Herman is the village engineer, so.
Mm-hmm. Thank you, and I hope to see as many of you as you can on Thursday, because we're really, really excited about this announcement, so, thank you.
Thank you for that. Katie, I know we do have three new trustees. I know you're a busy businessperson, but are you available in case any of the three trustees would like an update from you, get more in-depth? Is that-
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Please feel free to email me or text me. I think most of you, I can give you my contact information. But, yeah, I would love to get you up to speed on the project, or even if you just want an update for those who've been hearing this all along, just, you know, to call me and email me. So, more than happy. And we're actually starting to put together an email list for some of the residents on the street that are not our tenants. We're notifying our tenants of when updates are, but of existing residents, just on what's happening. A lot of times, like this week, we got a call saying, hey, what's going on? Haven't seen anything lately, so.
Thank you.
Ms. Kim, if you don't mind, if you could send those to either Sarah or Emily, we could disperse those through the village as well.
The emails?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Trustee Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next is approval of Chuck's Auto Sales Special Use Quarterly Review. Trustee Kazam, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, go ahead, Beth.
This is for the special use located at 3920 North Boulevard Avenue, which is known as Chuck's Auto Sales. After the quarterly review, it was reported that this business is in compliance, and the property is being maintained in a neat and orderly fashion. So we're-
Thank you. Any questions for trustee Kazam?
So what exactly is a neat and orderly fashion? Because I drove by it about two days ago. I can't, I guess maybe I have totally missed what it looked like before, because I did.
I did.
That's a good question. So I'll ask Chief Sutton to give you a little history, and that's a good question, that's.
Well, we're very happy with the way it looks now. He is compliant. 25 cars, there are no junk parts, there's no, but he has cleaned up a lot. You know, that's kind of why we went quarterly, because I have to stay on Chuck once in a while to make sure that he is compliant. So it's a lot better than it was, but I agree. So, but as far as, as far as the junk parts laying around and everything else, that's what it's really referring to. There's nothing, but for the most part, it's in order.
It does meet whatever requirements we've set.
Put it this way, it used to be, you go down Illinois, and you could look through
these, and you could see Chuck's piled. I mean, you could see it over their houses. And anybody wanted to try and sell their home, they had a junkyard they were looking at.
Okay, well, then I would have to say, yeah, it's better.
He cleaned it up immensely. And he thought, you know, they're going once a year, he was, he would move his cars around, and we ended up having to go quarterly, because, you know, and like any kid, you got to keep an eye on them.
But if you see something, please contact Chief Sutton, because we can send code enforcement over there, even though we've approved this quarterly.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Trustee Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Any miscellaneous business?
I have one miscellaneous business, and I know we talked about this. I don't even know if the new trustees were here yet, but do you recall that we talked about raising our fees on the permits? Have we still, are we still looking into that? I only say that because, you know, I have a lot of people, well, just in the job that I'm in, I see permits from other cities, and I mean, we are like low. And I'm just saying, yeah, and I'm just saying, this would be another way of revenue for us.
Yes, that's correct. You did bring that up probably five months ago, and I will tell you that we, Sarah and I have currently had this conversation, that we're getting, we're getting all the fees really from the tri-county area that fits, that fit our, you know, our municipality. And I should have that, I would say, within the next month or two.
Okay.
It's been a little, it's been a hard process, because getting these numbers from other communities have not, has not been easy. So you're right. Looking at our fee permits, they are very low, considered.
Right.
And we discussed this at length, but instead of just doing one here, one here, two there, that's what's taken so long. We're going to come back to the board with the entire group. And a lot of them do need to be raised. Some were right in the ballpark, but a lot of them are so low, they haven't, they haven't been raised in years. So we will bring that back to the board.
Can we do that set July, or what is, or do we need August?
No, I would say July would be a good, good time.
Okay. Yeah, I'd just be interested to see, like, where we sit. I know some of what the other places charge, but we are way below.
We're way below.
And with as many as, much growth as we're having, I think-
We're way below in some, but then some we're right, right on target.
Are we right with them? Okay.
But thank you for bringing that up. Anyone else? Okay, Jack, I know this is going to surprise you, but I know you can think on your feet. You take just a few minutes to tell the board what you've been working on. So Jack Walton is our intern here for the summer, so.
Hello. For those who haven't met, my name's Jack Walton. I'm Mark's son, and I'm currently a college student at SIUE. I'll be a senior next year. I'm majoring in economics and finance. And this is my third week here as the summer intern, and I've been working closely with Sarah and Michaela, doing all sorts of different stuff. I love working on my feet, not so much talking on my feet, but that's okay. Yeah, so it's been really great. For those who I haven't met, I'd love to meet you at some point. Love to learn as much as possible from any of you, and, yeah, that's about it.
Board, I would just like to comment that, I'll put some words in Sarah's mouth. She has had nothing but high praise for this gentleman right here. He's been a tremendous assistance. I know that she is incredibly excited to be working with him, and Jack, you've been wonderful.
Thank you. That means a lot. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Trustee Gett? Oh, I'm sorry, we have the treasurer's report, so I'm getting ahead of myself.
All right. As of the end of May, May 31st, 2019, I apologize to the board. I just noticed that it says 2018. This is the 2019 numbers. The village-controlled account has $2,171,559.43. For the Water Works-controlled accounts, they have a total of $899,919.16.
You've heard the treasurer's report. I'd ask for a motion to approve it.
So moved.
Make a motion.
I have a motion and a second.
Second.
Any discussion or any questions on the report? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Trustee Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
That passes. All right. Now, trustee Gett?
I move to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I do. All those in favor of adjourned signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, or adjourned.
I'm going to give it to her.